Are there any other legislative cosponsors of the bills? Okay. Are there legislators who want to testify on the bills? Okay, great. And we are going to be using the clock for this section of the legislative testimony. It's Representative Cornfield, if you wouldn't mind helping me with that. Great.
So this is on 798. Okay. So my name is Catherine Nato. I represent District 78, which is Winslow and a portion of Benton. I am not here to testify myself. My constituent last night asked me to come in to testify on her behalf. She has two sets of twins and another child, so she was not able to be here. So I would like to thank my representative for speaking for me today as I was not able to make it to this hearing. My name is Catherine LaValle, and I'm writing to urge you to please support LD-798. I'm writing as a parent who sent my oldest children to school with nothing more than a letter exempting them from vaccinations. My oldest set of twins will be 12 in June, and when they were born, I was afraid of vaccines. I was afraid due to misinformation that was spread over the Internet, and I was uneducated about how disease is spread. The anti-vaccine groups will tell you horror stories about vaccines coupled with lies about how the disease is spread and prevented. They warned me that vaccines cause autism, along with stories of how their children were vaccinated and soon after diagnosed with autism. I also have a 10-year-old son who is not vaccinated. He is now on the autism spectrum. He was showing signs of autism from early toddlerhood, but because I was told that autism is caused by vaccines, I did not believe he could possibly be autistic. My son is doing fine, but he has a harder time than he would have if he had gotten early intervention. I was able to write a letter without any education, without any background, without any good reason, to exempt my children from vaccinations to enter public school. Parents do not have the qualifications to exempt their children from vaccines. The only exemptions that should be allowed are medical exemptions given by a doctor. I have 19-month-old twins now, and they were vaccinated on schedule. They are thriving, healthy, and have no signs of autism. Even if they were, though, I would choose to have a child with autism over a child paralyzed from polio or deaf from measles. Thank you again for your time. I heard you again. I urge you again to please support LD-798. The anti-vaccine movement needs to be stopped before someone gets killed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative.
I can follow this up with, in writing.
Okay, you could send that to our committee clerk as well.
I will.
And it will be entered into our records.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Good afternoon. I apologize. You're going to get this around, and it's going to say it's from the VLA. So there was a rush to get this going. I do want to read one piece that was given to me that you have attached, so it doesn't take too much of my time. It's a piece that was written by one of my constituents, Peter Morningstar, and he does oppose the bill, and he is a pediatrician up at Northern Light AR Gold. And he says, "While I do oppose the bill, I will explain in brief and detail. In brief, I believe that America, we have a much higher bar for interfering in raising, for interfering in the raising of children by well-intentioned adults who themselves are entitled to disagree with all form of orthodoxy. I believe that the interests of the individual liberty must be in stark contrast to the interests of the greater society before infringing on those individual liberties. That said, I do not believe that vaccine refusal currently represents a large enough risk to the public welfare to justify policing, justify policing the medical decisions of our citizen families. While this could theoretically change in the future, I do not see the risks there at this time with our current roughly 95 percent vaccination rate in public schools." And my testimony, my testimony is rather short, but I did give you some case law behind it for you to go look at as well. And I come to you today in opposition of LD-798. LD-798 takes away the individual's freedom of choice in deciding whether or not to vaccinate their child or children. It's a little story. In 2006, upon arriving at Fort Dix, New Jersey, as part of the 3rd Battalion 172nd Infantry Company from Brewer, Maine, we had to go through medical processing. Part of our processing was to receive a number of immunizations. It's kind of a common thing when you're getting ready to go someplace where you don't know what they've got there. So while these might have been for our benefit, it was not a choice that we as adults who signed up for the military to go into combat could make. We're going to a foreign country where no one knows what we would be subjected to, so the government made that decision for us. One of the immunizations that I received personally and a number of the soldiers that were with me was anthrax, the anthrax series, including the booster. Now, for any of you that have been following the VA, they've found now and have linked several long-term medical issues that myself and my fellow comrades could possibly face due to that forced vaccination, the one that we didn't have a choice to, but we raised our hand to serve this country. I'd like now bring your attention to a federal law that applies and would apply to this bill and needs to be addressed. In 1993, HR 1308 was sponsored by then Representative Charles Schumer. You might have heard of him. At the time, he was representative. He's a Democrat from New York. An act to protect the free exercise of religion. Section 3, Paragraph B, Sections 1 and 2, state. Government may substantially burden a person's exercise of religion only if it demonstrates the application of burden to the person, number one.
Representative, would you like to wrap it up, please?
Yep. Is in the furtherance of compelling governmental interest, and it is the least restrictive means of furthering compelling governmental interest. The government has the responsibility to provide the burden of proof as to why it would take an individual's civil liberties through a compelling interest test, which is given to you on the back. Through this bill, in this case, it has not--
So Representative, we can read the testimony that's been provided. Would you like to wrap it up?
Sure.
Thank you.
Basically, I'd like to say there's several courts, federal courts, that state that this is an actual illegal bill.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Thank you for coming today.
Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and Honorable Members of the Joint Standing Committee on Education and Cultural Affairs. I am Kathy Javner, Representative for House District 141. At your leisure, I encourage you to read the towns comprising our district located at the bottom of the letterhead. This will save us time. I am testifying today in categorical, unequivocal, unreserved, and emphatic opposition to LD-798. I am not opposed to vaccinations. I am opposed to the government usurping my liberties as a parent and stigmatizing unvaccinated children. My husband and I are parents to the three most amazing humans on the planet, Christopher, Sahara, and Katodin. Two of our children were born overseas. Two of our children have been vaccinated, what I like to call "up the yin yang," having received their vaccinations. Sorry about that. Okay, you know what? Maybe if I do that, is that better? Okay, awesome. Having received their vaccinations on an accelerated schedule, because of our international travel, and we've also received immunizations for typhoid, yellow fever, and tuberculosis, which I hope we never have to require here in the United States. One of our children is vaccine-free. All of them deserve to receive public education, which is subsidized by 55 percent of my property taxes, and even more in other towns, I hear. We, however, have chosen to homeschool for a variety of reasons, but I have never complained before about paying my share to the local school system. Conversely, if this bill does not receive and ought not to pass out of this committee, I'll be leading the march directly to my superintendent's office and whoever else's office that I need to protest, to protest my tax dollars going towards an education system that only ensures that certain students qualify for public education, which, by the way, is in direct contradiction to the mission of the Maine Department of Education. This mission states, "The Maine Department of Education's mission is to provide leadership and to collaborate with educators and learning communities in order to ensure that every learner has the opportunity to be successful." This bill proposes that only those who qualify under certain requirements have the opportunity to be successful, leaving unvaccinated students stigmatized. This is not justice. This is not protecting students on any level. It is segregation in its rawest form. You've been bombarded with statistics. I know. I get the emails, too. However, I want to add a few to the plethora already crowding your minds. In Maine, there are around 1,900 children in the foster care system. Childhood obesity could cost the state over $1 billion in medical care. Over 950 babies are born addicted to opioids annually. One in Maine children are food insecure. These are the issues that should keep us up at night, not the removal of immunization waivers. We were elected to represent, not mandate and add stigmatization to any populace in our great state. Help the DOE tell the truth that every learner has the opportunity to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you for your testimony.
Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and members of the committee. My name is Sherm Hutchins, and I knew better than to follow her, but I couldn't get ahead of her, so. I represent House District 131, which includes Dedham, Otis, Allyn, Penobscot, Prospect, Stockton Springs, and Verona Island. I'm here today to share testimony of a friend rather than of my own, and I've attached some testimony to that. But to do it quickly, she says, "To whom it may concern, I'm requesting that you vote no on the bill about vaccine mandates." And she's talking about 798. I'm opposed to vaccinating my children for several reasons. First of all, there's a risk involved, and where there's a risk, there must be a choice. There have been thousands and thousands of cases of vaccine injuries and death. Two of my six children have an underlying liver disorder that makes it very dangerous for them to have foreign substances put in their bodies. We have to be very careful about many chemicals, medications, that they come in contact with. Second of all, there are very questionable ingredients in many of these vaccines that would be mandated under this law. These are ingredients that I do not support putting into my children. Human DNA is one of the many ingredients that I will not allow to be used in my children's bodies. Thirdly, herd immunity is a complete myth. They lie, and there is no science to support such a thing. And finally, I believe in freedom, and the government tells me that I must put certain drugs into my body or the bodies of my children is not freedom. I stand firm in my belief that my government guarantee me liberty, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Thank you for your time in reading my letter, and please consider voting against 798, is what she is talking about. And 7987, sounds like it might be a nice cure. My Marine Resources Senator was here that even brought to the point that if we kill one, we can actually kill them both, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative. No questions. Okay. Before I bring the next speaker, I would invite to sit in the front row Karen Kuziak, Laura Blaisdell, John Bancroft, Sylvia Sewall, Patricia Ensley. This front row is reserved for people who are testifying next. Okay, I would like to invite Commissioner Nancy Beardsley from the Maine CDC to offer testimony.
Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and members of the Joint Standing Committee on Education and Cultural Affairs. I am Nancy Beardsley, and I am serving as the Acting Director for the Maine Center for Disease Control and Prevention, which is tasked with providing essential public health services that preserve, promote, and protect the health and safety of Maine people. The Maine CDC supports LD-798 because it will keep our children healthy and safe from a necessary disease, ensure safe schools and childcare centers, and protect vulnerable people against serious diseases. Currently, nursery school licensees, administrators, or other staff members are allowed religious or philosophical exemptions for immunizations. This bill removes these exemptions. This bill also directs the Departments of Education and Health and Human Services to amend their rules to remove any exemptions from immunization requirements because of their religious or philosophical beliefs. This includes students in elementary, secondary, and post-secondary schools and employees in healthcare facilities. The Department of Health and Human Services, DHHS, supports these changes. Protecting individuals and communities from communicable diseases such as measles, mumps, and pertussis is a fundamental purpose of Maine CDC's disease prevention mission. According to vaccination coverage for selected vaccines, exemption rates in provisional enrollment among children in kindergarten, United States 2017 to 18 school year, Maine ranks seventh in the nation for the highest non-medical exemption rates among school-aged children. This survey represents 12,527 students, resulting in a 5.3 percent overall exemption rate. Medical exemptions for Maine students account for 0.3 percent, while nationally, medical exemptions are 0.2 percent. Non-medical exemptions, which include religious and philosophical reasons, were reported at 5 percent for Maine compared to the national rate of 2 percent. Most of Maine's school-age exemptions are non-medical, with the highest rates of non-medical exemptions being reported in Hancock and Waldo Counties. Hancock and Waldo Counties also represent two of the four counties with the highest reported rates of pertussis cases in 2018, 56.7 and 158.3 for 1,000 people respectively. Not only did high exemption rates likely contribute to higher rates of pertussis disease in these two counties, but also in the entire state, as Maine reported the highest rate of pertussis disease in the country for 2018. When someone chooses not to vaccinate, that decision can jeopardize the health and safety of entire communities, especially the weakest and most vulnerable among us. Those who are unable to be vaccinated, such as young infants, pregnant mothers, or children with cancer, face the most risk from disease complications. Thirty-three states do not allow any personal belief exemptions. Maine is an outlier in this regard. Evidence shows that states that have tighter exemption laws have tighter immunization rates and less disease. The scientific evidence supporting immunization is overwhelming, sound, and supported by the professional medical community. Vaccinations are proven to be safe and effective. We at the Maine CDC and Department of Health and Human Services strongly support the passage of LD-798 for all these reasons, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Director. Are there any questions? Representative Rudnicki?
Give me a minute.
Representative Sampson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
So the CDC is housed within the Department of Health and Human Services, correct?
That is correct.
So where the Maine immunization program, is that within the CDC or Health and Human Services?
That's within the Maine CDC. The Maine immunization program is within the Maine CDC, which is part of the larger department, the Department of Health and Human Services.
So, okay, so my question for you then, so you're the right person to be talking to about this.
Well, I have a team of people back in the office, but--
Okay. Well, and if you could get information of the work session--
Sure.
--if you can't answer it at this point. But apparently, four years ago, parents who were concerned about vaccines and the disease issues connected with vaccines, they were, they're no longer being entertained, those questions. If they have questions, if parents have concerns, where can they go now? They haven't had a place to go for four years. They were low priority, apparently. This is a report I've been given.
Okay.
So I'm wondering if you could speak to that, or if you could help guide us for our discussions during the work session on that.
Sure. I can bring that information back and resources and contact information, absolutely.
That'd be great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Representative Rudnicki?
Sorry. Just don't want to talk to me, that's all. Thank you for coming. So I have a couple of questions, which I don't know if you're the right person to ask or not, but I was trying to get my thoughts together here. So how many children and adults would be, or children specifically, because this is what this is going to be dealing with, are going to actually be turned out of school because of this? How many do we have currently in the state of Maine that are not vaccinated?
I can bring that information back, because there are, you know, there are three different types of exemptions that are allowed: religious, philosophical, and medical exemptions. So I can bring that back and provide that for the work session.
Okay. Thank you.
Representative Drinkwater?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Perhaps this is information that we could get at the workshop--
Sure.
--because we had a senator come earlier, and his testimony is that the life of a vaccine is finite and needs to be re-administered, and the vast majority of adults are not vaccinated, protected from these diseases. I would be interested in knowing some statistics on that.
Okay. Absolutely. I can bring that back.
Representative Sampson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So for the work session, could you bring us the records, the documentation that shows that we're the seventh highest? My understanding, reading those, we're the 30th, so I'd like to have that discrepancy explained, please.
Sure. I can bring that back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'd just like to announce that there is an additional overflow room in the Appropriations Committee. That's Room 228 in the State House. Please feel free to go there if you need a place to sit down and get comfortable. I see we have a late-arriving legislator. We do use the, are you a cosponsor? No. Okay. So we do use the clock for legislators who are not cosponsors. Just keep that in mind.
Do you got a place to sign in? No. No. Okay. Okay. I do apologize. I've been in committee. We've had several work sessions, and I've been waiting to hear when it was going to be time to get over here, so I apologize for that. Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, distinguished members of the Joint Standing Committee on Education and Cultural Affairs. I am State Representative Dick Pickett. I represent House District 116 in Oxford County, towns of Mexico, Dixfield, Peru, Canton, and Hartford. I'm here today to testify neither for nor against LD-798, an act to protect Maine children and students from preventable diseases by repealing certain exemptions from the laws governing immunization requirements. To my colleagues on both sides of the aisle, this proposed legislation should give us all great cause for concern. Since the founding of our republic, our culture has been anchored by the basic premise that the family and the values and conscience reflected by the family's belief system is paramount in our society. Parenting based on this family belief system is at the very core of our democracy. Parents should have the right, for any reason, to vaccinate or not vaccinate their child. This decision by the parent could be construed as foolish and arbitrary, and perhaps both can be true. Nevertheless, parents should be the ultimate decision-makers for their child until the child reaches legal adult status. The government and/or the school district should not be allowed to force their collective will on any family. In this case, the bill introduced by the good Representative Tipping has admirable intentions. Vaccinating children is meant to protect them and the greater community from the effects of preventable diseases. I believe vaccinations do just that. The public has an honest right to expect our communities and our children to be safe. My personal opinion aside, however, parents have the right to expect the state to honor the family's core values. So here we have the state's need to protect running up against the family's right to decide. Sounds like an insurmountable conflict, but we are here to work together to find solutions for Maine people. As most of you know, I firmly believe in the core values of our Constitution and our republic. However, I also firmly believe in personal responsibility for one's actions. My service and my words would not be consistent and honest if that were not true. There should be consequences for parental decisions made, and those consequences are the direct responsibility of every parent. It is not the responsibility of taxpayers or the community at large to underwrite financially or otherwise suffer consequences for every decision that a parent makes. The state believes that they have a duty to protect, and the parent believes that they have a duty to not vaccinate. Both positions are responsible and honestly held. I would like to offer a solution that respects and honors them both. I offer the following. All communicable illnesses should be tracked in our school systems and in our communities. The day a disease case is recognized to exist in a school or in a community at large, any child who has not been provably vaccinated against this disease should be sent home. The child should be kept out of the public school until medical authorities deem there is no further risk of contamination. This immediate action will protect the child, the community, and other schoolchildren from the spread of the disease. In addition, please keep in mind that I said that every parental decision comes with parental responsibility. Some may say that the district and the school have an obligation to provide an education to--
You're over your time. Could you wrap it up?
Speed it up. I only have about a page and a half, but it's in big font. School have an obligation to provide an education to every child. However, taxpayers should not be on the hook for further expense because a parent chooses not to vaccinate. So under my proposal, every child must be acceptably homeschooled and/or schooled online by computer until the threat of the spreading disease is gone. The computer, any instruction, and any costs associated with this schooling should be borne 100 percent by the parent. The district and the government should not be penalized for the parental decision not to vaccinate. Period. This type of policy would adequately protect the community from spreading illnesses, as Representative Tipping intends, and it would also immunize them, so to speak, from incurring expenses that are a result of parental decision-making. It matters not whether--
Representative Pickett, could you wrap it up, please?
Yep. Matters not whether the reason for this refusal to vaccinate is religious, moral, medical, or a combination thereof. The solution I outline respects all parental and family rights if they choose not to vaccinate. It also permits the greater community's need to protect all citizens. And I have three things that I would propose to look at--
Oh, we can read them.
And you can read that yourself.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments?
Now I know why I don't like the clock.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your time.
Blaisdell, and then John. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Bancroft.
Senator Millet, you're back. Representative Cornfield, and members of the Joint Standing Committee on Education and Cultural Affairs. My name is Karen Kuziak, and I'm here today representing the Department of Education, speaking in support of LD-798. This bill removes all non-medical exemptions from immunizations in order to decrease the numbers of children not vaccinated against vaccine-preventable diseases. All 50 states require specific vaccinations for students, and all states allow medical exemptions, as Maine will continue to do with the passage of this bill. The Center for Disease Control, CDC, points to immunization policy as responsible for preventing 21 million hospitalizations and 732,000 child deaths in the past two decades. And my source here is the National Conference for State Legislatures. Additionally, while only a small number of states have eliminated non-medical exemptions from immunization requirements, the trend with new state legislation around the country is to strengthen requirements for vaccinations and increase the rate of coverage among the population. population. States are also taking measures to ensure that parents have accurate information about immunizations. Although there might be some initial challenges when schools enforce the changes outlined in this bill, the overall benefit far outweighs the drawbacks associated with its implementation. When schools require documentation of childhood immunizations, the process serves as an added check on whether a child's immunization status is up to date. Furthermore, ensuring that as much of the population is immunized as possible while allowing exemptions when immunizations are medically contraindicated benefits the population both in the areas of maintaining health, as well as in the area of reducing cost for treatments of preventable diseases. The responsibility of monitoring immunization records often falls to school nurses, and sometimes SAUs have only one nurse for more than 1,000 students. Thus, communication about new requirements in this bill with families, with medical providers, and the general public needs to be well-coordinated and widespread. For reasons highlighted in these remarks, the department is in support of LD 798 because its passage will protect children and students from preventable diseases. I'm happy to answer questions and be available for the work session, as will folks from our floor.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Kuziak? Yes. Representative Rudney?
We've been teasing her. Thank you for coming. Just a question, if maybe if you don't have the answer, if you could get it for the work session. What are the number of children that will be granted access to schools by this bill versus the number of children that will lose access because of this bill?
Representative Rudnicki, thank you for your question. I don't have the number at my fingertips, and if this is a known number that someone on our floor is able to find, we will bring it to the work session.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Laura Blaisdell. Just put it on the edge.
Good afternoon, Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and members of the Joint Standing Committee on Education and Cultural Services. My name is Laura, Dr. Laura Blaisdell, I'm a resident of South Portland, and I'm here to testify in support of LD 798 and in opposition to LD 987 as a practicing physician, pediatrician, public health expert, researcher of vaccine hesitancy, and a mother. There is no single preventative health intervention more safe and effective than immunization. The benefits of vaccination extend beyond prevention of specific diseases and the devastating disease sequelae of individuals. They enable safe travel, extend life expectancy, have saved millions of healthcare dollars, and allow for safe schools. We know this unequivocally, unequivocally, through fact and experience, from the scientific community to our living community that remembers what it was like before immunizations. Yet, with increasing regularity, returning outbreaks speak to us about the cracks in this mighty foundation. The issue before us is complicated. It has taken me a lifetime of study and practice to develop a clear-eyed understanding of the stakes and the wise action that must be taken at this junction to ensure we continue as a healthy Maine. It also took putting my own children upon the temple of my deep-seated belief in immunizations to have the necessary compassion for parents on both sides of the issue. We medical professionals and educators are stewards for children, governed by a unique set of guiding principles and values when we consider decisions that are good for all children and not just our own. Anecdotal evidence is not ethically sufficient. Our communal standards must support the health of all. You will hear that where there is personal risk, there must be personal choice. But please do not believe that the choice of Mainers is for our schools to be left unprotected against outbreaks. This is not my choice, and this is not our choice, because where there is community, there must be mutual care. Over decades, pediatricians spend countless hours with pediatric parents discussing immunizations. We put into context journal articles, internet research, Facebook worries, and oft heated conversations. We gain trust and prove that we are knowledgeable and experienced in immunization, and importantly, we will be the ones for them to call on in the nights and days ahead. And yet, all this has not stopped the tide of vaccine refusal. It is for this reason that I implore you to understand this legislation is some of the most important, in my lifelong dedication to caring for children. The public health and medical communities in the U.S. and around the world are working tirelessly to protect the natural resource of wellness created by immunizations, and we are failing. One of the pillar miracles of human health is being pulled down one brick at a time by its success and by our folly. We need help from you. We must stand together on evidenced and educated ground and know that we will no longer be confused by misinformation. We will make choices for our children and demonstrate to them how immeasurably we value their health and education. We will keep calm with the knowledge that through history's long memory provides evidence on how we must move forward today and through times to come. And lastly, with integrity, we will face the considered task of balancing individual and communal responsibilities. For where there are communities, there must be mutual care. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Thank you very much. Mr. Bancroft? Oh, I forgot. We have one, another late representative.
I was here earlier. Good afternoon, Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and distinguished members of the Joint Standing Committee on Education and Cultural Affairs. I am Diane Dank, and I represent House District 9, serving Kennebunk Port and parts of Kennebunk and Biddeford. I am here to speak in support of LD 798, an act to protect Maine children and students from preventable diseases by repealing certain exemptions from the laws governing immunization requirements. Sorry, I need new glasses. I come to you today not as a colleague or as a legislator, but as one who was once a special education teacher contracted by RSU 21 to go into the home to service children who were far too critically ill with life-threatening diseases to go into the mainstream. For the entire 2016 through 2017 school year, it was my job and my privilege to go into the home of a young girl we will call Little Dee. She lived with her mother and father in Arundel, was eight years old, had life-threatening leukemia, and could not be exposed to any other children. The risk of her surviving her treatment for childhood leukemia while being exposed to children who may not have been inoculated against a number of diseases was simply too dangerous and literally could have cost her her life. I went to her home five days a week, three to four hours a day. Her sole interactions were with her parents, her grandparents, her two little Chihuahuas, and me. She was periodically taken to Children's Hospital in Boston for her treatments. We studied math, history, science, reading, writing, and social studies. Fortunately, because she was living in an era in which computers made long-distance learning possible, she was occasionally able to Skype in on special occasions and visit with her friends. We certainly made the best of a bad situation, but it was not perfect, and it was extremely lonely. Imagine being a child, pardon me, who had no interaction with other children. But to have had this interaction would have endangered her because there was no guarantee that the other children had been inoculated. I urge you to consider voting in favor of LD 798 to protect Little Dee and others whose lives depend on the health of others.
Thank you, Representative. Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and members of the committee. I'm Dr. John Bancroft. I'm a proud resident of Brunswick and the chair of Pediatrics at Maine Medical Center and the Barbara Bush Children's Hospital. I've provided medical care to children for over 35 years, and I'm here to testify in support of LD 798 and in opposition to LD 987. At the Barbara Bush Children's Hospital, we care for hundreds of children from around the state who, for medical reasons, cannot receive immunizations or whose immune system does not respond to them. Some are born with immune deficiencies, while others are at risk because of serious conditions like cancer, autoimmune disorders, or Crohn's disease. Additionally, thousands of children across Maine are simply too young to receive the series of immunizations for measles, chicken pox, or whooping cough. All these children must rely on community, or what's referred to as herd immunity, that limits the risk of exposure when contagious diseases enter the community. When they contract these infections, the results can be devastating, including hospitalization, disability, or even death. Measles and chicken pox are exquisitely contagious. Simply being in the same building or the same school bus without physical contact can result in transmission of the disease to those without immunity. The contagious period begins before children have obvious symptoms. Thus, isolating children once they have a fever or rash is insufficient to protect others. In a recent New York outbreak of measles, as you've heard, a single child without symptoms attending school resulted in the infection of 21 additional children. Herd immunity is critical to keep spread of disease to a minimum. When that immunity from measles falls below 95%, infection spreads more easily, as we're seeing around the country. Seven Maine counties had immunization rates for measles below that threshold at kindergarten entry in 2018, indicating we are at risk of widespread disease when it is introduced into our classrooms. LD 798 would close that gap. Education of patients and families about immunizations is critically important. All healthcare providers across the U.S. are required to provide adults and children information on the benefits and risks of vaccines before they are administered, using documents produced by the U.S. CDC called vaccine information statements. Additionally, current Maine Department of Health and Human Services rules follow the U.S. CDC standards for medical exemptions for vaccines. LD 798 does not change the current process or standards for medical exemptions. I stand opposed to LD 987 because this bill would allow medical exemptions for reasons beyond the standard. Maine children deserve to attend school and childcare without a heightened risk of exposure to vaccine-preventable infections, so I urge the committee to support LD 798 and to oppose LD 987. Thank you, and I would be happy to answer questions that you may have.
Are there any questions to Dr. Bancroft? Yes, Representative Sampson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
So my question for you as a doctor, is there a doctor, or are there doctors in the state who are trained to track and work with and investigate, really, potential vaccine injuries? Is there a tracking system? What do they have in place in the state of Maine?
There, there's a national tracking system. I would, I would defer to our colleagues at the CDC regarding state tracking. In terms of individual symptoms or injuries that may be related to vaccination, it depends on the type of injury. We certainly have qualified pediatric neurologists, for example, if there are questions related to seizure disorder or seizures that occur following vaccine administration, just as one example.
So in your professional experience, you don't know of any individuals like yourself or someone like you in the state that are tracking these and investigating these potential injuries in the state of Maine? You don't know of any?
I'm not aware of anyone in a systematic manner.
Representative Rudnicki?
When was the last time or that a Maine resident actually contracted measles?
I don't have the date, but it's, my recollection is it's been in the last five years, but we could find that out, and certainly the Center for Disease Control would have that. That is, that is a required reportable disease.
Right, it was just my understanding that it's been, you know, in excess of 20 years, that's why I was wondering about that, because I hadn't heard anything for a Maine resident. And then, you know, why are we trying, if we currently have, why are we trying to get 100% measles vaccine uptake if it causes brain injuries in some children?
The, we won't achieve 100% because there are some who simply should not and cannot receive the vaccine. But it's important to achieve as high a rate as we can to, to prevent spread around the community. The rate of, of neurologic injury following a measles vaccine is actually strikingly low. And the, with the natural disease with measles, back when I was a child and had measles, the rate of serious progressive neurologic injury, what's called subacute sclerosing panencephalitis, was four to 11 per 10, per 100,000, which is much higher than, and that particular complication has never been reported with the measles vaccine. So neurologic injury from the natural infection is a much greater risk.
Thank you very much, Dr., oh, I beg your pardon. Senator Carson?
Thank you. Dr. Bancroft, can you explain in terms for all of us to understand the risks posed by having a five-year-old whose immune system is at least somewhat suppressed, and I don't know how you measure that, by chemotherapy as a result of being treated for ALL leukemia, let's say, going into a kindergarten or, or a first grade, first grade classroom with an immunization rate for pertussis and for other highly infectious diseases being below 5% and then above 5%? I'd really like to understand what kind of risk that five-year-old is, is being subjected to under those circumstances.
Sure. When, when immunization rates are high, I'll just use high and low rather than focusing on a specific number. When immunization rates are high, the likelihood that a person entering the school who is incubating that infection and is entering into the contagious period but doesn't have symptoms yet, the likelihood they're going to meet another person in the hallway who does not already have immunity is low. Immunization rate high, the chance of that secondary spread and then spreading to a third, and spreading to a fourth, and spreading to that child you described is low. When immunization rates are low, the likelihood of meeting another susceptible individual is pretty good, so it can spread more rapidly, and the likelihood of your immune-compromised five-year-old meeting someone who can share that disease goes way up.
So is this, is this, in essence, a prudent exercise of the precautionary principle? Is it something like that? I mean, you've got, you've got numbers, and you've said high immunization versus low immunization. I'm trying to kind of get at it so that we can all understand how this works.
Yeah. The, for each of the, for each of the infections we're talking about, the, the contagiousness, the ability to spread it easily is different. Some take more contact than others. The two that, over my years, kept me awake the most at night were chicken pox and measles, because truly, just passing someone in the hallway, being on the same school bus, is enough to, to spread those. They are exquisitely contagious. So, thank you.
Representative Drinkwater?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Bancroft, for coming in. Being a child of the 50s, my memory is I got like six immunizations back then. What are parents facing today for the number of vaccinations? I've heard numbers from 60 to 70. What are the numbers?
It's not that high, and I'm sorry, I'm not prepared to quote a number, but I'm sure there'll be others who testify who can. But, but you and I perhaps lined up for the first Sabin vaccine for polio, and remember the sugar cube with the early Salk vaccine. Nowadays, those, the number of diseases we can protect against has increased, so between our childhood and today, we've, we've added the ability to protect against measles, mumps, and rubella, against Haemophilus influenzae type B, you know, against varicella, chicken pox. Those were all diseases that we experienced, and unfortunately, some of our colleagues, some of our family members, some of our neighbors didn't fare so well with those. So the number of diseases protected against has increased.
And just a quick follow-up, if I may. Apparently, we're doing group, we're doing group inoculations now, MMR. At what age do they start receiving these inoculations? Is it within six weeks of birth? Is it, and what's usually their first shot?
The combinations occur very early. Hepatitis B is, is recommended to be given in the newborn period, so that's probably the first one that, that... first one that children would have the opportunity to receive. The diphtheria, tetanus, and acellular pertussis comes next, along with inactivated polio, at usually six to eight weeks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.